It is exactly 6:31. This is Mary Ellen McKay, Chair of the City of Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the August 25th zoning board meeting. As Chair of the Zoning Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by Governor Sununu as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized to meet electronically pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are, one, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are video conferencing utilizing WebEx through the city's IT department for this electronic meeting. All members of the zoning board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen in to this meeting through dialing the following number, (978) 990-5298, and using the password 273974. Public access to this meeting is also provided via WebEx, and a link to the meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available on the city's website. The meeting can be streamed through the city's website, https://www.nashuanh.gov/318/ctv on Nashua's Community Link. The public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel 16. Two, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings and where applicable, notice to a butters. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashua's website at www.nashua-nh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall. Additionally, a link to the public WebEx access for this meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available on the city's website, www.nashua-nh.gov. Three, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call (603) 821-2049, and they will help you connect. Four, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present the applicant's case followed by questions by the Board. We will allow for a rebuttal period as best as possible for persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. Normally, the Board utilizes a light timer, which will not be available. However, the Board and all participants should endeavor to comply with the timeframes of 15 minutes maximum for the applicant and five minutes each for anyone wishing to speak in favor or in opposition or with questions. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the Board are appearing remotely and are not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the Board may contact the Planning Department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if you are unable to use WebEx. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations were submitted in advance of the meeting so that they may be displayed for remote access viewing. Real-time public comment can be addressed via video to the Board utilizing the WebEx virtual meeting software for remote access. Real-time comments via audio will be addressed at the conclusion of the public hearing. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the Board utilizing the WebEx virtual meeting software for remote access. The public is also encouraged to submit their comments via email to the Planning Department, email, planning@nashua-nh.gov, or by mail. Please make sure to include your name, address, and comments. Letters should be addressed to the Planning Department, PO Box 2019, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03061. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Zoning Board meetings will be held electronically until it has been deemed safe to conduct more typical meetings at City Hall. The zoning board, the Planning Department, and city staff thanks you for your understanding and patience during this difficult time. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. Mrs. McKay will introduce staff as well as other ZBA members. Mrs. McKay or the designated Chair will read Case Number One on the agenda into the record at this time. Mrs. McKay will ask each applicant, representative, or individual required to be at the hearing to state their name and address, and if there is anyone in the room with them during the presentation. And before we begin with the roll call, I did want to make an announcement that Case Number Four has been withdrawn. Mr. Carter, would you like to say anything more on that before you take the roll, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not really. We did get an email from the applicant's attorney that they have withdrawn that case, so there will be no discussion on that case this evening at all. It's been withdrawn.
Thank you. Yes?
Can you just note the address for that case, because not everybody might understand it as Case Four?
Thank you. This is the case on 8 Merritt Parkway. That is the case that has been withdrawn.
Madam Chair, the other three cases are scheduled to go.
Correct. But I just wanted to reiterate that fact in case anybody was here specifically to hear that case, it's not going to be heard. Will you now take the roll, please, Mr. Carter? I mean, Carter?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Madam Chair. Nick Kanakis?
I am present, and there is no one in the room with me.
Rob Shaw?
I am present, and there is no one in the room with me.
JP Boucher?
I am present, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Mary Ellen McKay?
I am present. There's no one in the room with me, but there's two little dogs in the other room who may make their presence known.
Jack Courier?
Jack Courier is present. Nobody in the room, and I hope my audio is a little better now. Any feedback?
Sounds pretty good. Okay. Steve Lionell?
Present, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Damon Kara?
I know he's here.
I'm present, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Madam Chair, I believe that Estatia Burris will not be attending tonight, so we do have a quorum ready to go.
Okay, and before I begin the first case, I just wanted to let people know that we have, one, two, three, four, five, six, six people here this evening. Five of them, no, we should have seven. Five are regular members, and they will be the voting members. The voting members will be Mr. Shaw, Mr. Courier, Mr. Boucher, myself, and Mr. Lionell. Mr. Kanakis and Mr. Mancara are alternates, and should a regular member recuse themselves, they will step in to vote. And so now I will read Case Number One into the record. David Matthew Smith, owner, 21 Columbia Avenue, Sheet 65, Lot 208, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to allow a home addition for a master bedroom and an accessory dwelling unit in-law in rear of house. It is in the RA Zone in Ward 3. Is Mr. Smith present?
I am.
Okay, thank you. You will have 15 minutes, sir, to present your case, and then the Board will have an opportunity to ask you questions. After that, we will look to see if there is any support for your application, and then after that, we will look for questions, comments, or opposition. And then we will move to the public. Thank you.
I also have my friend Ed Campbell here with me, doing a lot of construction management and stuff like this.
Ask you to state your name and your address, and if Mr. Campbell is going to speak, we would ask the same of him.
Okay. 21 Columbia Ave., Nashua, New Hampshire, and looking to get an exception for ADU unit off an existing section of the house. Something of a later on, double, the spring.
Mr. Smith, are you finished speaking? I lost a lot of what you had to say, or you finished rather rapidly?
Yeah, no, just looking for, for an ADU unit, ADU unit, for an in-law off an existing section of the house. That would consist of an addition for master bedroom as well onto the existing house with a 12 by 12 bedroom or in-law.
Kate, can you scroll down, or is that all you have? Thank you.
Go down, one more, Kate.
Yeah.
Yeah, stop at that.
So, okay, so right where you're at, right there, that'd be what I would like to add on for an in-law bedroom, and the existing building where this playroom would be, I'd like to add a kitchenette into that.
Yes, Mr. Falk?
The addition of the ADU is 521 square feet. It's well under the 750 requirement. The proposed master bedroom really doesn't have anything to do with the request. It meets the setbacks and all that. That's just part of their overall home addition that they're doing. But the ADU meets the internal wall or door that can access the primary to the accessory dwelling unit, and, you know, like I said, the size of it is 521.
Okay, so are we here? Actually, Mr. Smith, have you seen the special exceptions, the nine of them?
Yeah, yes.
And is it your testimony that you attest to seeing these and that you affirm that you are in complete agreement with all nine? Or, Mr. Falk, should I read them into the record individually?
I'm wondering if you can help me unmute this. Hello?
We did hear you for a second.
I don't know who that is.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
That was, uh...
Yes?
Hello? Oh, hi, can you hear me? I'm Ed Campbell.
Yeah.
Oh, you can?
I can hear you, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was off there for a while. I couldn't, I had to find my unmute button, apparently. I apologize, I tried to pipe in a minute ago, but I'm Dave's friend, and I just was having a hard time coming on, but I just wanted to make sure I could be part of the conversation as we move along, because I know Dave's not too comfortable with this stuff, so I just want to make sure you can hear me and I could answer questions along the way here.
Yep, Mr. Campbell, we'll ask for your participation, but at this point in time, I need to get a clarification on these nine points of law and Mr. Smith's concurrence.
Very good. I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Falk?
Madam Chair, if you feel comfortable in reading them all off, that'll be fine, and we can have Mr. Smith answer just yes, yes, that he meets. I believe he meets them all, because I think I've talked to him about them all, but if you want to go over them for the record, that'd be great.
Okay, fine. Mr. Smith, just, I'm gonna read them, and then you can either state yes or no. Number one, the accessory dwelling unit shall be clearly incidental and subordinate in extent use and purpose to the primary structure and does not exceed 750 square feet.
Yes.
The accessory dwelling unit shall be the only accessory dwelling unit within or on the same lot as the single-family unit.
Yes.
The accessory dwelling unit shall not alter the single-family character or appearance of the single-family dwelling or its conformity with the character of the neighborhood. No new entrance or exit to an existing or to an accessory dwelling unit shall be constructed on the front or frontage side of the single-family dwelling. No new curb cut from the street shall be constructed. The exterior design of the accessory dwelling unit shall be compatible with the single-family dwelling through architectural use of building forms, scale, and construction materials.
Yes, correct.
The owner of the property must occupy either the primary or accessory dwelling unit as the owner's principal place of residence.
Correct.
The owner of the property shall provide the City of Nashua with a covenant for filing with the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds, along with the appropriate filing fees.
Yes.
One additional off-street parking space is required above the minimum standard for a single-family home.
No additional parking.
There, oh, so you already have the additional parking available?
Yeah, in the driveway.
Okay, I just have to be clear. I want to make sure that that parking place is actually there. An interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit.
Yes.
The single-family dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit shall not be separated in ownership, including by condominium ownership.
Correct, yes.
And the accessory dwelling unit shall only be associated with single-family detached dwellings and shall not be associated with manufactured housing as defined in RSA 674 colon 31.
Yes.
Thank you. So let the record then show that the owner has incurred with all nine special exceptions. Mr. Campbell, is there, and if you're going to speak, I would ask that you state your name and address for the record. Is there anything else you want to state to the Board that have to do with the plans and the development of this ADU?
My name is Edward Campbell. My address is 29 Sargent Road in Hollis, New Hampshire, and I apologize, I didn't hear some of that. I was trying to find my way onto this site, so I basically, if there's any other questions that came up that Dave may have not have been able to answer, I may be able to help with that.
Okay, we haven't, no one from the Board has had any questions yet, but they now have your information. Does anyone on the Board have any questions for Mr. Smith or Mr. Campbell? And Mr. Campbell, is your relationship just as a friend? Are you a builder, developer? Are you helping design this?
Yeah, I'm a contractor. I'm a friend of Dave's. I've known him for years, yes.
Okay, that explains it. Thank you very much. Does anyone on the Board have any questions for either gentleman? Unmute, thanks.
Madam Chair, I am seeing no hands in the audience, and I've seen head shakes from the Board members.
Yeah, I can see the head shakes, but I wasn't sure if you were getting something I wasn't seeing. Okay, so if that's the case, then I'm gonna close the public hearing and I'm gonna open the public meeting. Mr. Mancara?
Honestly, I think it's a very straightforward application. It seems to meet all the requirements. It's below the standard, you know, in terms of size, and it seems as though it would have really no impact to surrounding uses, so I would support the application.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Shaw?
No, I likewise think I would, like Mr. Mancara just said, I support the application.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boucher?
I also support the application for the same reasons my fellow Board members spoke into.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lionell?
I also support the application for the same reasons.
Well, thank you, sir. Mr. Kanakis?
I support the application as well.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
I support the application. I have, I concur with the comments of my colleagues, and I hope my audio is okay.
Thank you, sir. And I, too, Mary Ellen McKay, support the application. Is there someone who would like to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for David Matthew Smith, owner of 21 Columbia Avenue, Sheet 65, Lot 208, requesting special exception from Land Use Code, Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to allow a home addition for a master bedroom and an accessory dwelling unit in-law in the rear of the house. It's in the RA Zone, Ward 3. We find that it is listed in the table of uses. We find it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired possession safety. We find that it will not overload public water drainage or sewer or other municipal system. We find that the accessory dwelling unit special regulations are fulfilled by testimony, as testified by the applicant. We find that it will not impair the integrity or the outer character of the neighborhood or be detrimental to health, malls, or welfare of the residents. So with that, again, I make our motion to approve the special exception.
Thank you, sir. And do I have a, thank you, Mr. Lionell, for your second. Okay. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Lionell, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Lionell votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Courier, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. Mr. Smith, your variance has been, or your special exception has been granted. As you may or may not be aware, any decision made by this Board, there is a 30-day window of appeal. Someone may or may not challenge our decision. If you have any questions, any comments, or concerns, please refer back to either Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poyer, and they will gladly help you. And thank you very much, and congratulations, and thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to question number two, I mean, Case Number Two. Okay, BNA Construction LLC, owner, 32 Groton Road, Sheet D, Lot 265, requesting a variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-223, for minimum lot area, 40,000 square feet required, between 20,400 square feet and 26,000, 50,000 square feet proposed for individual sewage disposal systems for lots 1 through 9, inclusive for Meadow View Estates Conservation Subdivision. This is in the R40 Zone, Ward 5. Is there someone here to speak to this application?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, for the record, my name is Chad Brannon. I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Our office is located at 206 South Street in Milford, and I will be representing BNA Construction LLC this evening with their variance application. With me tonight is Joshua Becker, who is the owner and one of the members of BNA Construction, so together, hopefully, we'll be able to address any questions that the Board may have. Our client is looking to develop tax map parcel D-265 into a conservation-style subdivision. The subject property is situated on the south side of Groton Road and has a physical address of 32 Groton Road. The property consists of 10.375 acres of land and has 645.2 linear feet of frontage along Groton Road. The property consists of primarily wooded lands with some existing structures and improvements situated along the front portion of the site. The soils on site are hinkly wonky sand, which is an excellent slope. It's excessively drained soil, and the site has slopes ranging from about 3% to 8% throughout, so it's a very nice property from a topography and soil standpoint. The property is surrounded primarily by residential properties to the east, west, and north, and on the south side of the property, it borders the Dunstable Mass town line, and also that the property on the Massachusetts side consists of conservation land. Zoning for this site is R40, which requires 40,000 square foot lots for a conventional subdivision with 120 linear feet of frontage. Conventionally, this property could support up to 11 lots. Rather than increasing the density and maximizing the infrastructure and impacts to the property, our client has chosen a direction of going with a conservation-style subdivision where infrastructure, impervious cover, and overall land impact can be reduced. This proposal will yield nine conservation lots, or nine lots within the conservation subdivision, excuse me. Those lots range from about 21,000 square feet in size to 26,000 square feet, and these lots, being smaller in nature, will reduce the overall footprint of the project and allow for 3.8 acres of the property to be permanently protected in a conservation area. The state regulations for... The state regulations for open space in conservation subdivisions contemplate the entire land area. So they take a look at the entire 10.375 acres and contemplate site loading and septic designs, accounting for the entire property because the state takes the standpoint that they're trying to promote land preservation. They don't look at individual lots within a conservation or an open space style subdivision. The city regulations under Section 190-40A states that conservation subdivisions are permitted in any residential zoning district. So this is a permitted use in the district. The conservation regulations also do not address minimum lot sizes, but rather really focuses on land preservation and the goals and objectives of land preservation and really layout, which we believe this proposal meets. Under Section 190-223 of the city ordinance, that's where the minimum lot sizes are addressed relative to lots, individual lots, that are serviced by on-site sewage disposal systems. And this ordinance does require that lots be 40,000 square feet in size. This ordinance does not make any exclusions for conservation subdivisions, which really makes this, or this particular ordinance, somewhat contrary to the goals and objectives of the conservation subdivision ordinance. And this regulation certainly is also contrary to the state regulations that I just went over briefly. It's our belief that this regulation really is intended for a conventional-style subdivision and not for conservation subdivisions due to these facts. For these reasons, we are before you tonight requesting a variance from Section 190-223 to permit a conservation-style subdivision over the subject property. It's important to note that we have done similar developments within the city where we have been before this board requesting the same variance, you know, for conservation-style subdivisions. And we have been successful in that in the past and we believe this proposal is very consistent with all of the goals and objectives outlined within the ordinance. And we're certainly hopeful that we're successful this evening as well. With this said, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to certainly address any questions that the board may have at this time or we can go through the variance criteria. But I guess I will just take a second to review the plan that you have in front of you really quick. And what you can see with this plan is we're proposing a road that's about 550 feet in length. That road is called Lenora Lane and that will service the nine-lot conservation-style subdivision. And what we've shown on every one of these lots is the house that my client is proposing to construct or at least a version of a house that he would be proposing to construct. So this is a real representation of what development on these properties would be. You'd have, with this particular development, one curb cut on to Groton Road, which is certainly a benefit in a conventional subdivision, which may, you know, yield up to five or six curb cuts along Groton Road and then maybe some back lots or a road that would, you know, extend behind those lots, certainly resulting in additional land impacts. The lots that are shown on this plan do show the septic locations and those are the rectangular areas. There's actually two of them. One of them shaded and then one of them's just a white area in the front of the homes. The state requires us to show two septic locations on each conservation lot. That's the only requirement that the state requires because, again, they look at the entire property to determine site loading and to make sure that we're not proposing an unreasonable density. In this case, we're actually proposing a density that could be less than what a conventional layout would yield. And that's primarily because of the size homes that my client wants to build and the setting that he's looking to accomplish along the cul-de-sac area in just the meeting, you know, adequate separation between the units. This proposal does meet all of the other requirements of the zoning and, you know, we certainly believe it meets the intent of the conservation subdivision ordinance and would be a benefit to the surrounding properties because there's increased buffering, there's continuity to open space and, you know, other reasons that we've outlined in the criteria. So now with that said, I'd be happy to open it to questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kate, can you lower that, please, for me so I can see? Okay, I think I saw Mr. Courier's hand waving.
Yes, if you can hear me, I hope you can hear me clearly. And on the drawing that Kate just had visible, there was circles around each wellhead. And I was wondering if Mr. Brannon could explain those circles and the diameter and overlap or not overlap of those circles?
Sure. Those circles represent the proposed wells that would service each one of the homes. And it's not uncommon in a conservation-style development that those radiuses would extend over the lot lines of each individual home. But as long as they don't extend into the septic areas, then it's technically compliant on, you know, to any regulations. And as I've stated before, this is a very common type of layout. What this particular layout allows is for people to own the land around their home. So it's not a condominium-style development. If this was a condominium-style development, it would technically be one lot and I don't believe that we would be before you. But the ownership style is preferred in the market and has been a successful model. But those wells, or those circles, represent the well, the radius around each individual well that would service each of the homes. And it's a 75-foot radius.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then what would be the proposal for the open space? Would that be community-owned? Or who would actually own that? And my sense is there's maybe no maintenance. I didn't know if you could describe, would there be, say, any trails or common use of that land?
So typically, I mean, there are ownership options for the conservation land. A lot of times with these types of developments, there would be, you know, maybe a homeowners association set up only for the maintenance of their conservation land where each owner of, within the property, would have a percentage interest. There really wouldn't be much for maintenance. Primarily, the documents associated with the conservation lot would restrict any future development but would allow passive recreation. So there certainly could be trails, you know, through that property and maybe to adjacent conservation lands. But we're not proposing necessarily the construction, you know, of a trail at this time, but that might be something that we contemplate as we hopefully move forward, you know, to the planning board.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Brannon? Mr. Courier?
Sorry, I had one more question there. And that was, I didn't quite understand about, like, the trade-off, about the 40,000-square-foot minimum in the actual regulations. Why, if that were adhered to, what would, you know, what could or couldn't be developed on this parcel?
Well, if you, if you look at the land area of the parcel, it would support between 10 and 11 conventional lots. And so what you would have is, you would have a longer road, which would be a longer public road that would be maintained by the city. You'd probably have more drainage infrastructure that would ultimately be built and maintained by the city. And you would have no open space area. So you'd have large lots. You'd have more impervious area. You'd have, it would have the same density, maybe, you know, the, but it would have increased infrastructure, increased impervious area in it. It just would not be a conservation-style development. And I think that, you know, in reviewing and going through the conservation regulations, that's certainly something that's been promoted by boards within the city in the past. It's got, in my opinion, you know, we certainly like these style developments. It allows for continuity with open space, increased buffers to neighboring properties. So you don't get that sprawl on lots where, you know, somebody's shed or garage or, you know, yard clippings ends out really getting close to, you know, neighboring properties. It ends out, it just allows for a really nice setting and buffer to, you know, Groton Road and also to neighboring properties. Conventional development can happen along Groton Road, too. So you could see, if this was a conventional plan, odds are what you would have is, you would have as many lots as possible along Groton Road, taking advantage of the existing road frontage. And then you may have a road that kind of goes out behind those frontage lots, servicing lots in the back. And so that would yield more curb cuts, you know, more traffic movements along Groton Road. And that's really the reason, if you go through the goals and objectives of the conservation regulations and the conservation ordinance, it talks about, you know, consolidating, minimizing impacts, minimizing the infrastructure, minimizing land disturbance and allowing for conservation. So that's really the benefit of this proposal. My client thinks that this would be a nice development for the property and would fit in well with the surroundings.
Okay, one final thing is, on your, you have some density calculations. And it's, it kind of starts off, it says one dwelling unit per one acre. And I just want to add that, on that, it's clarifying that the total dwelling units would be nine. I thought, I heard you say 10 or 11 conventional, but I think it would be non-conventional. I was just wondering if you could take a quick look at your density calculations at the top of, I guess, the second sheet of your drawings.
Right, so that density calculation does not account for the other lot that's being subdivided, which is not a conservation-style lot. That would be Lot D26510. So that's the reason why that is, say, nine instead of 10. But nonetheless, that's a conservation subdivision calculation. The other thing to consider here is we're not taking advantage of any of the bonus density incentives outlined within the conservation district. We actually could get 11 conservation subdivision lots based on some of the density bonuses that would, you know, we would qualify for. But it's not something my client wants to do because he's looking for a certain setting, offering a certain size home and really, you know, looking to create a very nice, marketable neighborhood.
Okay, so the conservation applies to lots 1 through 9 and then 10 isn't part of this conservation proposal?
That is correct. That is correct. 10 is a conventional.
Madam Chair, if I could get in?
Yes, I saw your hand go up, Mr. Falk. I was waiting till Mr. Courier finished speaking.
That Lot 10 was actually before the board recently. That was granted a use variance for the little cabinet-making shop that the owner is going to be using there and living at. And that is a part of this conservation subdivision. So that one lot already has approval. And that lot meets the zoning dimensional criteria for over 40,000 square feet well. And also, with the conservation subdivision, the minimum of 40% of the property has to be open space. And they do have 40% of this entire property as open space.
Thank you. Ms. Poirier?
Madam Chair, I also see a hand raised by Mr. Becker.
Okay. Mr. Becker, did you wish to speak?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right. So just to go along with what Mr. Brannon had to say regarding this subdivision, there's a certain spirit of that neighborhood that's been developed and maintained by the Terrell and Holt family through history and through time that we're trying to maintain. It's only a matter of time until Nashville gets built out and built out and built out in that area. However, we took the advantage of trying to maintain a spirit of what is, what is in the surrounding areas. When you look across the street from where this development is, there's the old farm that used to belong to the family who owned that. There's a lot of conservation land around it. We bought the Dunstable conservation land. So the idea, the intent and the spirit of this little subdivision was not to impact it so greatly that it would lose all the appeal and the beauty of what is in the surrounding area. We were trying to achieve and maintain this spirit in Nashville. And that's one of the reasons why we chose not to go for every bonus, every square inch in overlap, as many houses and just jam in there as much as possible because it would just really, it would just decline in the surrounding area.
Mr. Becker, I know you stated your name and address at the beginning, but each time you speak, it's actually correct form. Could you please restate your name and address? Could you please do so?
Joshua Becker, BNA Property Preservation, 341 Silver Lake Road in Hollis, New Hampshire.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else have any other questions for Mr. Brannon or Mr. Becker? Seeing none, I want to see if there's anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this application. I see a hand by Ms. Holt. Ms. Holt, if you would please state your name and address for the record? Kate, is she muted somehow?
No, she is not. I seem to recall last time we had this.
The same problem. So, Ms. Holt, if you're in favor, we can't hear you. Maybe you can give us a thumbs up because we can see you? Okay. Thank you for that. I'm sorry about that. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this application?
Madam Chair, I see no hands in the audience and I have not received any messages in chat.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here who would like to speak with questions, comments, or concerns? You see anything, Kate?
Madam Chair, I'm seeing nothing.
Thank you very much. Well, if that's the case, then I will close the public hearing and I will open the public meeting. Mr. Mancara? Sir?
So overall, I think the development, to me, makes sense. I will say, I struggled a bit with the hardship with the special conditions of the land. I think what brings me around is the size of the parcel, the amount of conservation land in the area and really the history surrounding these properties. When we saw this property come before us before, I think we heard some similar background and knew that it was going to come for development shortly. But I definitely think it's within the spirit and the intent of the ordinance in that open space developments are allowed. The density that's proposed is consistent. The density that's proposed is consistent with what's allowed, both conventionally and in terms of open space. It's actually coming in less. And I, I do think providing more open space, reducing the amount of roadway that has to be maintained, reducing imperviousness, and reducing impact to the land is certainly consistent with the goals of the ordinance. So I support the application.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Kanakis?
I support the application as well. I don't have much to add on top of what Mr. Mancara had, but I just want to say that I definitely support and I'm glad that they decided to go with the conservation route rather than extending everything and building more than is really necessary just to keep the open space land and keep it looking as natural as we can in Nashua.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Carrier, sir?
You know, I, I struggled with this a bit. I mean, I certainly generally in favor of conservation plans. With this overall size lot and the nine lots, you know, I, I struggle with the benefit that might come from the open land. I mean, you'd see a little bit from the road and from folks' back, backyards. You know, there's a big stormwater retention basin right along the border. And, you know, yeah, I envision that a chain, kind of a chain link fence around a stone ripper. I don't know. I mean, my, my sense is, you know, conservation easements have their place. It, it all depends on the size and the configuration of the lot. And my sense is that just a traditional subdivision would be better here, probably a large lot. You'd see a lot of this. I think that's still being character of the neighborhood. But, uh, you know, this is really about the forty thousand square feet of, and I, I guess, I'm not sure if it warrants that, but I'm open to hear other opinions.
Mr. Boucher, sir?
I support the application. Again, I, I, we're here for the forty thousand square feet. I, you know, I clearly understand that, that regulation and support it, I support this, this, this attempt to, again, minimize the impact on the neighborhood. And so again, with that, I, I don't really have much to add other than, you know, again, I'm going to support the application and don't see any issues why I would look at this anything differently than supporting it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Shaw, sir?
I'm in support of this application. I actually think there, there is a sufficient benefit of the conservation development. I think it, you know, it does things like, especially pouring the butter like Ms. Holt, who I think establishes some privacy buffer there and land that won't be developed. And I think if it was, it just be done with a standard full regular development, you'd have the potential for just the entire lot being essentially open and not really preserving any guaranteed preservation of any of the, the natural area. I was concerned about the fact of the limited lot size and just the application of the typical R forty requirement, but I think the fact that the the overall area of the parcel supports the equivalent of those required forty thousand square foot lot. And as early testimony by Mr. Brennan, the soils are, are very good and will be, I think, very you know, well suited for the lead fields. I think all told, and when it's all rolled together, I think this is actually a good usage and a good way to develop this lot.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lionel, sir?
I support the application for the reasons that Mr. Shaw and Mr. Mancara gave.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel. And I too support the application. It's increased conservation. So your green space is there and there's less sprawl, so to speak. I, I like the plan and, and the thought process behind it to recognize green space and that Nashua still has aesthetics that it likes to hang its hat on as well as development and industry. So thank you for that. Is there someone, and Mr. Carrier, has all of this conversation helped you, sir?
Yes, I've, pardon me, to myself again. I appreciate the full amount of opinions and I incur with my fellow board members that this would be a good way to go from hearing all, all the other opinions. So thanks for that.
Thank you. Mr. Falk, sir?
Um, I, I don't know if it was really made super clear, but if there were sewer, you know, city sewer here, they wouldn't be here because in conservation subdivisions, there's no minimum lot size. So they're only here because the lot sizes are less than forty thousand square feet, which they can have by right in the conservation subdivision.
Thank you for the clarity, sir. Is there someone who would like to make a motion? Mr. Lionel, thank you, sir.
Give me a moment here.
You're coming from far away.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. We got it.
All the way from Paris.
Okay. Like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, BNA Construction LLC, address is thirty-two Rotten Road. Sheet D law two sixty-five requesting variance from land use code section one ninety dash two two three for minimum lot area, forty thousand square foot required between twenty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-six thousand fifty square foot proposed for individual sewage disposal systems for lots one through nine inclusive for Meadow View Estates Conservation Subdivision. This is in the R forty zone, Ward five. The board finds that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. Given the special conditions of the property, this is a conservation subdivision and large sections of the lot are being left conserved. And the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board believes that this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, that it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It is not contrary to public interest and that substantial justice would be served. Therefore, I make a motion to approve this variance.
And thank you, Mr. Shaw, for your second. Okay, Mr. Shaw, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Carrier, how do you vote, sir?
Hi, this is Mr. Carrier and I vote in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Thank you. And Mary Ellen McKay also votes in favor. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Becker, you have gotten your variance. And as I've stated earlier this evening, any decision by the board may be appealed within thirty days. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, please re refer back to Mr. Falk or Ms. Poirier and they will gladly assist you. But thank you for your presentation this evening and good luck with your project. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move forward with case number three. And just in case people have come in late, case number four, eight Merritt Parkway has been withdrawn, so that case will not be heard. Case number three. Eric Daniel and Margaret Kegs. The Chance owners, Andy Erickson, ALL LLC applicant, Four Marquee Avenue, Sheet one oh one, Lot seventy-nine, requesting special exception from land use code section one nine zero dash one five, table one five dash one, number three, to construct an attached garage addition accessory dwelling in-law unit above. That's in the RB zone in Ward five. Is there someone here to present the application?
Yes, that's I.
Okay.
Eric LaChance of Four Marquee Ave.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I purchased my grandfather's house. He had owned this house since nineteen sixty-two. Two years ago, I have my mother and my uncle living in the home with myself. And at this point in time, I am seeking approval for an auxiliary dwelling unit above a garage for myself. It will be constructed by twenty-four by thirty-five garage and a twenty-four by thirty space studio style ADU above. It will be built where the existing carport is, aging carport is. The size of the addition and plus the size of the existing home will be very similar to most others in the neighborhood. And you can see a picture there. It won't have any impact on surrounding traffic as I'm not increasing the number of people in the home. And I have existing parking for all of the vehicles that will be residing at the home as well. And that is all.
Thank you, Mr. LaChance. Thank you, Mr. LaChance. Is there someone, or do any of the members of the board have a question? Mr. Carrier?
Uh, just curious of your diagram where the garage is. It looks like, is that going to be a detached garage? Or is it going to be attached like with the, where the carport left there is?
Garage to the new addition to accommodate a breezeway style.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. No problem.
Kate, can you put that down, please? Thank you.
I apologize, Madam Chair. There's a bit of feedback loop on Mr. LaChance's side, so I've been trying to manage that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Shaw, I see your hand, sir.
Yeah, I, I guess I, this could possibly go to Kate, but I'm a little bit confused because I think at least in our packet, I think it's like pages five and nine, there appear to be two different floor plans for the, I am assuming the upstairs and I really have, was having trouble resolving kind of that. And so I know we had a problem with some of the documents, but it looked like they were different views though. So that's why I'm really just kind of confused.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. That is correct. Some of the paperwork came in a day or so after the regular application. We put them together. I guess they must have gotten shuffled along the way. You should have received a corrected version this afternoon electronically.
No, I'm going by the corrected electronic one. That's why, so and there's one that, if you actually pull the document up, I think it's page five in the PDF you sent us. And then you go to page nine and there's a different view. And it looks like it's something different with like the stairs. I just couldn't quite resolve.
Kate?
Yes.
One, page five is the one.
Yes. Yes, please disregard page five. That was for case number one.
Yeah, that was this one, Mr. Shaw. It showed on another property's.
Page number four is the correct plot plan for this address.
Apologize for that.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Shaw?
Well, I guess it just goes through how you want to handle going through the special exception criteria. Because we didn't get, go through that by testimony yet.
Thank you. My next step, sir. Mr. LaChance, I will read, I will read, oh, maybe not. I hear feedback from me. The accessory dwelling unit, special exceptions. I would need you to agree to these. Have you seen these, sir? Mr. LaChance?
Yes, I have.
Okay. The accessory dwelling unit shall be clearly incidental and subordinate in extent, use and purpose to the primary structure and does not exceed seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Yes.
The accessory dwelling unit shall be the only accessory dwelling unit within or on the same lot as the single family dwelling.
Yes.
The accessory dwelling unit shall not alter the single family character or appearance of the single family dwelling or its conformity with the character of the neighborhood. No new entrance or exit to an accessory dwelling unit shall be constructed on the front or frontage side of the single family dwelling. No new curb cut from the street shall be constructed. The exterior design of the accessory dwelling unit shall be compatible with the single family dwelling through architectural use of building forms, scale, and construction materials.
Yes, that's correct.
The owner of the property must occupy either the primary or accessory dwelling unit as the owner's principal place of residence.
Yes, that's correct.
The owner of the property shall provide the city of Nashua with a covenant for filing with the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds along with the appropriate filing fees.
Yes, that's correct.
One additional off-street parking space is required above the minimum standard for a single family home.
Yes, I'm able to accommodate all vehicles and the additional parking space in the existing driveway.
Thank you. An interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit.
Yes.
The single family dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit shall not be separated in ownership, including by condominium ownership.
Yes, that's correct.
Accessory dwelling units shall only be associated with single family detached dwellings and shall not be associated with manufactured housing as defined in RSA six seven four colon thirty-one.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak in favor of this application?
Madam Chair, I am seeing no hands in the participants tab and no messages in chat.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak with comments, questions, concerns, or in opposition to this application?
Madam Chair, I see none.
Thank you. Then I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher, Mr. Boucher, sir? Mr. Boucher, sir?
Yes. I support the application. I believe that, you know, all the regulations are fulfilled. It is under the 750 square feet, so there's no issue there. Pretty straightforward to be, parking's there. I support the application as presented.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Knakis?
I also support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara?
I support the application as well.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
I support the application. I think, you know, meets all the criteria. It's a good-sized lot, and I think that's what ADUs, you know, are for here, so it's all in my book. I support it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shaw?
I also support the application.
Thank you. And myself, Marion McKay, I also support the application. Is there someone who would like to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for Eric Daniel and Margaret Kay LeChance, owners, Andy Erickson, ALL LLC applicant, 4 Marquee Avenue, Sheet 101, Lot 79, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to construct an attached garage addition with accessory dwelling in-law unit above. It's in the RB zone, Ward 6. We find that it is listed in the table of uses. We find it will not create undue traffic congestion or undue care protection safety. We find it will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer or other municipal systems. We find that the accessory dwelling unit special regulations are fulfilled by testimony of the applicant. We find that it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of the residents. So, therefore, I make, again, make a motion to approve the special exception.
Thank you. Do I see a second to this? Thank you, Mr. Lionel. Okay. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Courier, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Thank you, and Marion McKay also votes in favor. Mr. LeChance, you have been granted your special exception, and as I've stated throughout the evening, anyone can challenge or appeal a decision by this Board. They have 30 days with which to do so. Should you have any comments, questions, or concerns, please re-refer to Mr. Falk or Ms. Poirier. Other than that, congratulations and good luck with your project.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we move on. We have... Oh, has anyone, everyone had a chance to review the upcoming agenda for regional impact, also making note of the fact that we're on September 9th and not on September 8th?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, just everybody disregard the first email. Look at the second one for the ninth. Thanks to Mr. Shaw for bringing that up, that the meeting was on the night of the primary, and I thought it was too late to change it, but we did change it. Kate and I took care of that. We'll have it on the night.
Okay. Is there any regional impact?
I see none.
I don't see anybody that states there is regional impact, so I'm going to, along with the fact that the Board sees no regional impact, we have no minutes from that previous meeting, so unless there is any further business that the Board wishes to bring forward, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved by Mr. Shaw. Second. Mr. Lionel, thank you, sir. Mr. Courier, how do you vote, sir?
Sorry for the delayed unmute. I was just catching those on the voting sheets. I certainly vote to end the meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Thank you. And Mr. Lionel, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Thank you very much. And Marion McKay, I vote in favor of adjournment, and I'm assuming Mr. Mancara and Mr. Knakis are also very much in favor of ending the meeting. So, we are adjourned at 7:46. We will see you in two weeks, and have a safe flight back from Italy, Mr. Lionel.
Ciao.